Go ahead.
This is the call to call the order, the Wilmette Public Library Board of Trustees meeting for October 20th. The time now is 6:02. Can we have a roll call from trustee Barshes?
Jan, you're muted.
Okay, I got it.
Do you have two devices?
I do. One for the agenda and one for, yeah, so it's now a ways away.
One of them needs to be muted.
Okay. Trustee Barshes. Yes. Trustee Fishman.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Riddle.
Here.
Trustee Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Wolf.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here. Okay. At this time, we will just notice who we have as guests.
Okay, so I'm seeing a few guests on our call this evening. We have a represent, we have two representatives from the League of Women Voters. We're joined by Pamela Lurie and Liz Seager. We are also joined by three staff members right now, Jessica Thompson, Gail Justman, and Marty Bellefontaine. And we're also joined by our representative from Biblioteca Nathan Wonrow. And as others enter the the meeting, you'll see them in the participant list. So we've currently got 15 participants on the call.
Thank you. At this time, there's a time for, it's a time for public comment. Is there anyone, and you can just raise your hands or send it in chat that would like to address the board at this time? Being none, are there any, and I'll say it one more time, are there any attendees that would like to address the board at this time? Being none, let us just do a review of the minutes from September 15. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
So Luke.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by trustee Barshes and seconded by trustee Fishman to approve the minutes from the September 15, 2020 meeting. Is there any discussion? Being none, can we have a roll call to approve the minutes from the September 2020 meeting?
Trustee Barshes, yes. Trustee Fishman.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Riddle.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers. Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yeah. At this time, we're going to hear the treasures, there are no presentations, and at this time, we're going to hear the treasures report. Trustee Rogers will go over the financial reports for September as well as the bills and salaries.
All right. We received about $94,000 in real estate taxes, $12,000 and change in general fund interest, and $41,573 in Kennelworth administration fees. We are at 24% of general fund expenses, and the expected three-month rate is 25%. So everything is pretty much as expected. There are a few items individually that show up earlier in the year, and that's reflected in the the check detail, but there is nothing extraordinary in that list. Any questions about the financial report for September? Okay, I move approval of the bills and salaries for September. They are an attachment in your board materials.
Trustee Rogers has moved to
I'll second.
the bills and salaries. Trustee Wolf has seconded it. Is there any discussion regarding bills and salaries for September 2020? Okay, being no discussion, let's vote. It's been moved by trustee Rogers. It's been seconded by trustee Wolf to approve the September 2020 bills and salaries. Trustee Barshes, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barshes, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Okay.
Dan, you're cutting out. You're cutting out.
Sorry, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
I didn't hear a vote from Dan. I'm sorry. Did?
He said no.
That's correct. Thank you.
Trustee Riddle? Uh oh. Trustee Riddle, am I coming through?
Yes, now you are. I'm going to abstain.
Okay. And trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes. The motion passed with five yeses, one extension, and one nay. Next on the agenda is the action items, and we have a lot of contracts to review. And so we're going to turn it over to Director Austin to give a brief overview, then we'll go over each one.
Okay, thank you, everyone. It's true. We've got a lot on the agenda to discuss tonight. So the first four items on our agenda relate to our capital projects. As you know, in November of 2019, we approved in agreement with Inberg Anderson Associates to complete a capital reserve study. We received the results of that capital reserve study this summer, and we reviewed that information, and the information contained a number of details that were priority that needed to be addressed, some action items related to the building. And that's what primarily what we're here to discuss this evening. The first two items on our agenda, A and B, attachments four and five, relate to the administrative services for the projects that are coming forward. The first item that we're going to discuss, and then we'll get into the details, I just want to give you a brief overview. The first item on the agenda is an extension of the contract that we approved in January of 2019 with Shales McNutt Construction for Construction Management Services. You may all recall, sorry, I'm going to let John Risco into the meeting here. You may recall that Jason Perkounis was our construction manager on the outdoor renovation project, and Jason is available to to serve as our construction manager on the projects that we're going to be bringing forward this winter for Winter 21. So this is, that first item relates to the construction management services. And what that includes is preparing all of our documentation for public bid and to manage the bidding process, as well as managing all of the construction services, including scaling up all the skilled trades and coordinating the work that's being done. Same services that that Shales McNutt provided for us previously. That's what's in this proposal here. The contract is identical. It's just being updated to reflect the scope of work that we're going to be working on this winter. The next item on the agenda relates to Inberg Anderson Services. Now, Inberg Anderson is going to be serving as our architect on this project. They're familiar with everything that we're talking about because they have conducted the capital reserve study, and they're already kind of halfway down the road in identifying what the tasks are that we need to complete that are priority. So Inberg Anderson has identified key items that we need to address that are priority. We've discussed those in a previous finance committee meeting and at a previous board meeting. The scope of work for this project is outlined in their proposal. The scope of work that we're discussing includes updating the parking lot. That's one of our top priorities, and one of the things that we're going to be looking at later in our agenda. We're also addressing an ongoing water infiltration issue, and there's two locations that we're looking at, some leaks in the building that have been persistent for the past several years. The first of those is the curtain wall at the entrance of the library. So that's the, if you can imagine where the magazine area is and the glass vestibule main entrance on the west side of the building, when we refer to the curtain wall, it's that glass and steel mullions structure that was part of the addition. Well, anyway, that's what we're talking about. There's water infiltration in that system. I'll get into that detail here in a moment. That's also on our agenda. The other tasks that have been identified from Inberg Anderson that are priority with this project are included in their document behind attachment five. And those items include roof repair and replacement, tuck pointing, exterior sealant replacement, the replacement of branch panels and feeders in the lower level and first floor. That's the primary code issue that we need to resolve with our electrical panels, the main switchboard and associated features on the lower level, also related to the electricity, the replacement of the fire alarm system, which is dated and wearing, the design and specifications for an access control system, which is essentially the replacement of our locking mechanisms on all of our doors, bringing that up to the 21st century, and the design and specifications for a video surveillance system. And the final item that they're identifying is repair selected sections of the permeable paver parking lot. So we'll get into that here in a moment. But the scope of work that Inberg Anderson is identifying is those items. And the services that they're providing include the architectural renderings that will be necessary in order for us to go out to bid on all these projects so that we can take advantage of the time that we have this winter during a potential closure. That's one of the things that we're estimating. So getting this scaled up so that we're able to act when we see that opportunity present itself is the reason why these are all being clustered together as a single project. So I'm, I'm at this point open to entertaining any questions that you may have about the scope of work, about any of these individual action items. And I think what we should do is just go through the, through them individually, starting with our first agenda item there on, on section 6A, which is the contract renewal extension with Shales McNutt Construction. I should also mention too, before we get into into the action items related to this, is that trustees McDonald and Rogers met with me this past Saturday at the library to walk the grounds of the library and to go through the spaces that we're talking about on these projects. So they had a little bit of boots-on-the-ground experience with the areas that we're discussing. Obviously, Ron's got a lot of longitudinal history with the library in terms of the various projects that we've done, and he can provide a bit more background about this, too. But I'm happy to discuss at detail any of the things that we've got listed here. So the first item again is the Shales McNutt Construction Contract Extension.
May I ask a question if my connection's pretty solid?
Yeah, you're good right now, Dan.
Oh, good. Thanks. Good. This is great. I love to see it. Could you just reassure me that the extension of the contract complies with, you know, competitive bidding and procurement code?
Well, this is, this is a professional service, so this one does not have to go out to bid.
All right, so there's basically no procurement restrictions. We can hire whoever we want on a professional service.
That is correct.
Well, the purpose of professional services contracts is when a situation exists in which the
Thank you very much.
knowledge of the building or the facility, and that's what this represents. I move that we approve the contract of my client, as stated, with our construction management firm in the amount of $16,215 services that will be concluded by the end of January 2021.
I second it, and the, I second the motion. Is there any other discussion? Trustee Riddle?
I wanted to ask what the discussion entailed within the finance committee, if one could summarize that or help me understand if there was any discussion or questions.
This is a product of our earlier discussions with the board based on the capital need study, and this is moving forward with the initial set of projects that were recommended in the capital need study.
Lisa, Lisa, were you, I say more?
Yeah. And one of the reasons we chose Inberg is because they had, they did the study, and so they have intimate knowledge of what needs to be done as part of that. And so they have helped us extensively on that. Are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, it's been moved by trustee Rogers and seconded by trustee McDonald to approve the contract for Shales McNutt Construction for $16,215 for interior renovation work. Can we have a roll call? Trustee Barshes?
Trustee Barshes, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Riddle? Trustee Riddle? I'll come back.
Can you hear me now? Yes?
Yes.
Yep. So that was a yes?
Yeah, she said yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, the motion passed unanimously.
Okay, could I just add the comment that we had, since we had worked with the construction people and certainly with Jason before, and he was very, very good. So I think we are in good hands with that company and with Jason.
Great. Thank you, Jan. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the contract approval with Inberg Anderson. As I said, Inberg Anderson was retained for their help with the capital reserve study. They have a deep knowledge of our organization, and our building now is a result of that year-long study and identified a number of priority items. This, this stage of their contract is a portion of it. The first portion of this contract relates to the actual, the design phase. So this is, the first step that we need to take is to create the documents that our bidders are going to be reviewing and then applying for. So what we're looking at, when you're looking at page two of this document, there's a table down there that shows a series of stages, and those stages relate to the phases of the project that Inberg Anderson is working on. This first stage is the drafting of the construction documents. So what we're looking at here primarily tonight, or exclusively tonight, is that column, which totals $21,500. At this stage, I believe if we, if we move forward with this, there will be another motion that we'll need to make at a future meeting that will take this to the next, to the next level. So those other categories that you see that follow would be the necessary next steps that we would take from there. But we're not making those decisions tonight. We are simply making the initial decision to create the drawings based upon the the scope of work that was identified in the document before you.
Okay, Anthony, on page two, the table shows the $21,500 is applying only to the preliminary design, creating the means. Column two is construction documents, and we're not asking to approve that tonight.
Correct.
So, you know, we're actually looking at the preliminary design column for 215. I move that we contract with Inberg Anderson for the preliminary design phase of projects that are underway or in preparation, and a cost not to exceed $21,500.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by trustee Rogers and seconded by trustee Wolf that we approve the first stage of Inberg Anderson in terms of preliminary design work for $21,500. Is there any discussion or questions? Trustee Riddle?
My question is kind of in line with, with Dan's earlier. Are we aware that this is, this pricing is competitive? Are we aware that this pricing is, are we receiving any special pricing as a client and as really a long-term client of going forward?
I think because they have institutional knowledge that you, we've already paid for it when they did that capital study, and I think they know what's best, and we're paying competitive rates with other design firms. So in answer to your question, are we receiving any special rate? No, but I think they have institutional knowledge of Wilmette Public Library. But it will, they're just doing the bid work. Eventually, it will go out to competitive bid when you get to the final stage. So they're just administrating.
Yeah, I understand, but we're not to exceed 215. We understand that these, this fee schedule though is in line with, you know, other, other.
Their rates were up. So yeah, you had asked that, I think, when we were doing the initial capital study, the reserves, the capital study, looking at what the needs were for the library. But their rates were listed on the front, and I think they're competitive.
The pricing of this type of document is actually certified by the AIA Guidelines, the American Institute of Architects. And so they're not exceeding what those guidelines are. This represents standard pricing for these design services, the preparation of drawings, that similarly will apply to the subsequent stages for construction documents, bidding, and construction administration. And so there's nothing here that falls outside the guidelines that the AIA standards represent. Detail of those standards are in the, are part of the Shales McNutt definitions that we just approved. You know, the provisions are quite detailed and represent common practice in acquiring architectural and design services.
Thank you. That's helpful. I think it's helpful to mention those things, and I like your response to this thing.
Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call for the approval?
Trustee.
Okay.
Trustee Barshes, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson? Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes. Okay. Next is a contract approval for LPS Pavement Company to restore and for the basically restoration of the paving parking lot. And so you want to go, because that probably won't happen till spring. I think it's going to need to be shut down for 10 days, and it's not been taken care of or refurbished since it was installed nine years ago. So trustee, I mean, Director Austin?
Sure, I'll give you a little bit of background here. So it is true what trustee McDonald just said. The permeable paver parking lot has not had any remediation done to it since its installation. I do believe that it's, it's been our understanding from the capital reserve study that there would be some annual maintenance that we could take care of to help preserve the, the condition of the lot going forward. So we're certainly going to take those things under advisement now and take better care of the lot. It's not to say we haven't taken good care of it, but it has fallen out of maintenance, and that's why it needs this repair. So the scope of work that we're discussing right now relates primarily to the drive lane of the parking lot. And if you can imagine just an aerial view, well, there's a map, there's actually an aerial map of this on the attachment. So you can see the illustration that shows primarily the far east end of the parking lot by where the book drops are. That's where the major wheel turn is in the parking lot, where everyone is kind of turning to go around those book drops to then take the path back out towards the street. And what happens there, where the wheels are turning constantly on those permeable pavers, it grinds those bricks down further into the, into the substrata. And what that does is it kind of, it pushes the bricks down, and it, it also compacts the base, and it turns up all of the, the infill stone that's in there. So what we need to do in order to remediate this and return it to its regular condition and avoid the further degradation of the parking lot, which includes broken pavers, eroding substrata, as well as just general conditions that get worse in the winter, unfortunately, where all these wheel turns are taking place. It creates an icier condition, and that, that contributes to slip-trip fall hazards because we're not able to fully get up all of the debris in the wintertime. So that's part of what this is all related to. So what we're proposing, or what the proposal is there, is to take up the, the pavers the way that they are today, re-level the substrata, and reinstall the bricks. We may need some new bricks, and so we're accounting an allowance for that, as well as then infilling additional gravel to compact them together a little bit more so that there isn't as much movement of the bricks going forward. And then there's some maintenance that we can do to this annually going forward. Additionally, we're due to restripe the parking lot so that the, the parking spaces are more visible. So there'll be an overall enhancement and beauty to the parking lot as a result of this work. As Lisa indicated, this is, this is going to be disruptive. It will require the parking lot to be closed because that entire westbound portion of the lot is going to be out of commission for approximately eight to 10 days while this project is going on. Now, as we indicated, we feel that there may be a period of time in the future when the, the public library may be closed for the pandemic again, or there could be some other conditions like weather-related where the lot may be closed. This work cannot be done in the winter, but what we really need to do is to identify what the work is, which we've done here, and get a contractor who is on board and ready to go at any time when we designate the work being ready to be completed. So what we're going to do, and what this contract allows us to do, is to keep this company on retainer so that when we have an opportunity to pull the trigger and get the work done, when we see that there's an opportunity to do it with the least impact to the public, we'll be able to do that. This pricing holds through the end of our fiscal year, so we'll be able to complete this project anytime after the spring thaw. So that's kind of our plan there. Any, any questions or a motion?
I'll motion to approve moving ahead with this paving project.
I have a question before you do.
Not to exceed a budget of $33,000.
All right. I see Dan's got a question. Let's take our second first, and then we can get to Dan's question. Does anyone? All right. Thank you, Ron.
So trustee Wolf has moved, trustee Rogers has seconded, discussion? Dan?
Thank you. So we, if we started talking with the village and the post office about cooperating, you know, we advanced in the last, I don't know, six months since we've last had this, particularly because if we're going to shut it down, you know, that's a real opportunity to make sure we're partnered with the village and potentially the post office. So if we had any of those conversations, and if not, is this sort of the perfect time to start having those conversations?
Well, yes. So the first things first, I want to make sure everyone understands. The library has two parking lots. One, one parking lot, the permeable paver lot that we're discussing here that's under this contract, is the library's property. We own the permeable parking lot. The, the second parking lot that's primarily used by the staff is the village's parking lot that is shared by the library. We lease spaces in that lot, and the post office leases other spaces in that lot. And then any other available spaces are, are open to the public. other spaces in that lot. And then any other available spaces are open to the public. So that's the village's property. So just to make sure that everyone understands where there's two parking lots here. Obviously, the impact would be if the public library is open when this parking lot closure for the permeable paper lot were to take place. There's going to be some displacement of both staff and patrons in trying to access the building, and it will be necessary for us to evaluate what other options we have for parking. Our primary purpose is going to be to, as we work with the outdoor renovation project, is to make sure that staff are not taking up the immediate spaces that are closest to the building. We want to make that convenience available to the public first. So we are going to need to find alternate locations for staff to park during this time, and we'll certainly want to make sure that the post office workers are parking in their designated spaces during this time and not parking in the library's spaces. That's a persistent issue and is a daily maintenance issue that will require some parking management assistance from the village if we're not able to coordinate better with the post office. I will say it's been spotty in our efforts to try to do that in the past, but we certainly need to ramp that up. So Dan's point's well taken. There are certainly some impacts that are going to take place in accessibility, and we'll want to make sure that we provide other spaces. That said, we're in kind of a tight area. As there's development going on in downtown concurrent with this on Central, that's displacing some parking. However, you all may remember during the outdoor renovation project, the village was able to extend some parking along Green Bay for staff. I would certainly be open to exploring what our options are with the village there, in addition to the use of some of the other village parking lots, like such at the American Legion Hall and whatnot. So I think there's some places where we would be able to relocate. So no, we have, short answer, no, we haven't begun that discussion, but as soon as we move into this process, we'll certainly ramp up those discussions and come up with a plan for parking.
All right. Thank you.
Would it be possible?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What about, I know that there's, we rent spaces from the church. Would there be any other options to rent more space from the church across the street?
We could certainly look into that. The West Parking Lot at St. John's is what Jones referring to. St. John's has also been generous with us on some other, other events in their main parking lot. There may be some options for us there as well. So yes, I think we're going to explore every possible option that we can to keep parking close and accessible.
Anthony, do you want to talk a little bit more how you landed on LPS Pavement?
Yeah. So this is a, you know, obviously a permeable, I'm sorry, I'm going to mute you, Lisa. Thank you. This is a, an area where we leaned on Shales-McNut. They've got a lot of experience working with skilled labor and with special contracts. And because this lot is a little unique, there are not a lot of these permeable lots like this out there. Shales kind of leveraged their past experience and wanted to share a contractor with us. So this, they brought this contractor to the table with us, and we were really satisfied with their proposal. I walked the lot with the consultant that went through, and he gave us a number of different options for the proposal. As you see, what I recommended to you all is the full adoption of their proposal. They did bring forward a couple alternates. The initial price was a little less than what we're looking at. But when I discussed this with the facility staff, we agreed that the closure of the lot is not something that we want to do in phases over the course of time. We feel that if we're going to do it right, we should do it right all at once and address these issues before they get to be, to worse than they are right now. So you see in the alternates that there are, there's an area that's kind of in between the wheel turn as well as the exit. We felt it's going to just get progressively worse. We wanted to increase that, as well as that manhole cover that was identified there, kind of closer to the entrance. That could continue to recede, and we want to make sure that that's taken care of. So we've elected to go forward with all of that based upon the recommendations of Shales-McNut and this contractor. So no, I wasn't familiar with them previously. Shales brought them to us, and we've been really satisfied with our correspondence with them to date.
So Anthony, have they, has, have they suggested a different material for that turn in the parking lot that we have that where the book drop is?
Yeah, it isn't so much a matter of the materials. It's just a matter of the annual maintenance. So there's an infill gravel of a certain grade that we need to, that we need to put in there as the papers settle. That's just an annual thing that we can do. It's just dumping a little bit more gravel on the lot each year to try to infill the places where it settles. So no, it's not, I think, you know, the initial lot, the way it was proposed and installed was great. It's an excellent solution. But that said, it does require a bit of annual maintenance, and we just haven't been keeping up with that. So going forward, once we reset this after this project, we'll be able to do more annual maintenance on it.
Okay.
I've had strict pavers in my driveway for over 15 years. There's a certain amount of maintenance that is required. Now, obviously, the traffic in my driveway is mostly one vehicle. Occasionally, my wife goes out wandering, but mostly it's my car going back and forth. The volume of traffic in the library lot is, is many, many, many times more than that. I have my pavers pulled and reset. In my system, the base is sand. I have to have sand added and the pavers reset every three to five years. It's simply part of the maintenance. However, it greatly reduces icing. It greatly reduces other expenses. If we had gone nine years without maintaining asphalt or concrete, the lot would be a mess. The lot is passable. It simply has some maintenance issues that need to be addressed, and this is, this is normal. There's nothing, you know, surprising about the need to have this work done. Actually, the fact that we've gone nine years without doing any of the refurbishing and resetting of the brick is kind of surprising. That speaks well to the initial, the quality of the initial work. But if you've ever stood in our parking lot and watched the volume of traffic going through past the book drops and for people coming to the library, it's enormous. And so, you know, the reality is that this is simply part of maintaining it, but it's a lot less difficult to maintain than asphalt or concrete would be. So, you know, I think this is, this is simply part of what we need to spend to keep the lot full.
Okay. Thanks, trustee Rogers. Trustee Johnson, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam President. I love the lot. I think I'm all for maintaining it. I just think, I'd encourage Anthony to schedule a meeting with the village manager and the postmaster because clearly we haven't really upgraded our shared property. And given that they've got a drive-through drop-off with, you know, their mailboxes, and we've got a drive-through drop-off with our, our library boxes, I think if we collaborate, we can come up with a better solution. So I'm all for moving forward, but I encourage you to schedule a meeting where we can at least start talking about upgrading the entire property. Thank you.
We have had such discussions with the village in the past, and they've basically not been interested in cooperating with us to unify the lot, to, to provide joint maintenance. If they are willing to have such discussions in the future, we certainly can. But in the past, they simply haven't been willing to deal with that. And the fact is that the existing village comprehensive plan calls for alternate use of the lot that they control. In fact, it calls for turning it into park space. That's not likely, given the fact that the building on the other side of the alley from us wasn't in their long-range plan. But the village really has to be willing to have that discussion before we're going to be able to effect any change. The village owns the land, the land on which the drive-through for postal drop boxes is located as well. So the postal service really has very limited ownership of the property we're talking about. Their property line stops before the drop boxes.
Up to a year ago, they had no desire to get, to upgrade the parking lot or sell it to us. What they gave us as a solution was the new building that was being built on the corner had some free public spaces, and that they said we might could use that. That was their solution about a year ago. So appreciate the suggestion, but that's been addressed a couple of times. Is there any other discussion? Just one very small detail. I wondered if it were, if it were be possible to put small signs on the parking areas that are ours, with the hours available, you know, for the, whatever hours the library is open.
And we do.
There is something?
We did. And we upgraded them as part of, as part of our early COVID activity in April of this year. All those signs, they had kind of been worn, and we updated all of those. So they're, they're bright and shiny, and they certainly say what the expectation is for the period of time that we're leasing them. So.
Okay. Good. Thanks. Any other discussion? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract for LPS Pavement Company, LPS Company labor not to exceed $33,000, and it's good for this fiscal year. Can we have a vote? Trustee Barshis? Yes. Trustee Barshis? Yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson? He said yes. Oh, okay. Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yeah.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald? Yes. And you now have the contract for Reliant Contract Glass Labor Materials to assess and remediate the water leaks at the main entrance curtain wall and various other window elevations for an amount of $6,800. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the contract with Reliant Contract Glass for the leak remediation work on the curtain wall, and other window elevation was needed in an amount not to exceed $7,000.
I will second that.
It's been moved and approved. It's been moved and seconded by trustee Rogers and seconded, moved by trustee Rogers, seconded by trustee Wolf, that we approve the Reliant Contract Glass contract not to exceed 7,000. Is there any discussion? Did you get a sense of what they would do, Lisa, at all when you went through or Anthony? Yeah, it, it, there was, and Anthony can explain it better, because I'm going to explain in real layman terms, but there were some joints that were sealed that probably shouldn't have been sealed as a way to correct what they thought was corrected, and it caused a problem. But I want Anthony to give you a more technical explanation because it's beyond. Okay.
All right. I'll try to keep it basic, too. So, so basically, when, if you can imagine what that curtain wall looks like, it's a glass wall, and then there's the steel frame that goes around it. The steel frame, these steel mullions are hollow, and they contain what are called weeps. They're intended to funnel water through them. And you may recall, there was a period of time when the Books Down Under portion of the Friends Bookstore would flood, and we couldn't figure out why the heck the place kept flooding. And so the solution was to look at that curtain wall that had been added recently above that, that vestibule space. And the solution at that time was to caulk and seal all of those weeps that were part of the original design to filter the water through them, and then push it down to the lowest point, take it to grade, and so on. So what happened is we ended up clogging up the system, which forced the water to go elsewhere, and then that created a leak that was harder for us to identify and find. So what this company is going to do is go through and make sure that the wall performs the way it was originally designed. And yeah, so we're hoping that that's going to address the way that the water infiltration has been going through there. And they're pretty confident that they're going to get to the bottom of it.
What you're basically going to do is to restore the original design. I write the exams for the glass doors, windows, and walls industry that, that tests, the standards that manufacturers and their representatives are required to meet. And part of the problem is that when you seal up openings that water is supposed to pass through, it finds its way through whatever means it can. You never turn off the water. You simply redirect it to places that are harder to find. And that's what this repair is going to attempt to solve. Now, there is one other detail, just to correct. Books Down Under was created at the same time as the vestibule. That was all one project. The basement level excavation to create the Books Down Under space was part of the creation of the vestibule and the extension of what is, is now the periodical space. All of that was done together. That curtain wall has presented some difficulties in the past. It's, parts of it have been replaced. Over time, anything that was done that interfered with how it managed the flow of water simply moves the problem somewhere else. And so that's part of what this is attempting to address, is to restore the proper drainage that's designed into that system. There may in the basement level that the curtain wall wasn't the source of, but with, it was what seemed to be a solution at the time. It, it apparently wasn't. So, you know, that's work that might have to continue. And there is additional water infiltration study that is underway that's going to address other issues that we have elsewhere in the library in addition to this space. So this is simply a restoration of the drainage design that was originally a part of the curtain wall across the front of the library on Park Avenue.
Okay. It's, any other questions? It's been moved by trustee Rogers and seconded by trustee Wolf that we approve the contract for Reliant Contract Glass not to exceed 7,000. Can we have a vote roll call, trustee? Trustee Barshis? Yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yeah.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald? Yes, the motion passed unanimously. Next, you've got the contract renewal for Complete Cleaning Company. There's a slight increase, but they've been with us for some time, and they do a wonderful job, and they've taken some extra precautions that they're doing during the COVID crisis in terms of doing a little bit more cleaning. And I think Director Austin can tell you a little bit about that and that.
Yeah, we, as I said, we've been very impressed with Complete Cleaning. I've got past experience with them at another library and was very satisfied with them there. They do a great job for us at Willmet. They've been very serious in communicating with us throughout the whole pandemic process and enhancing their cleaning procedures and adjusting their schedules to meet our schedule. They've been great to work with. The crew that specifically works with our, with our staff has been wonderful. And as I've said to you all before, our account executive actually comes through on a regular basis and walks the floor of the building to identify any issues that he may see. So he kind of double-checks his, his staff's work in addition to the library staff doing the same. So I really feel that we get good results with them. In my experience working with cleaning crews and cleaning companies, Complete has In my experience working with cleaning crews and cleaning companies, Complete has really been one of the better ones that I've dealt with. So I'm I'm happy to bring forward this renewal to you this evening.
I motion we approve moving ahead with this contract at a budget not to exceed $58,000. If that's my audio, I apologize. Hope not.
Is there a second?
Either way.
Who's seconding? Okay. Okay, you can second the next one. Trustee Barshis has seconded it. Trustee Wolf has made the motion. Any other additional discussion? Does that contract, I do have, does that contract for the amount because there are extra services that they offer that I don't know if you take that you that that were in that contract? Is that, does that amount cover all that needs to happen? Because you all listed, there were some extra services that they listed.
Yeah, so Complete Cleaning does offer a whole range of services. What what you're approving tonight is their regular maintenance of the building. Complete also has historically done the interior and exterior glass of the building. We do that on a on a biannual basis. They do that, but they do it under a separate agreement with us. It's not part of what's what you're agreeing to here. So this is for the daily maintenance of the building.
Any other discussion?
We've had a number of years when they have requested no price increase. And so, you know, a modest increase under the present circumstances is not not a surprise. You know, they say they've done excellent work for the library for a number of years.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can we have a roll call to approve it?
Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Sorry, back in time, yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes, he said yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Next is the RFID, which we've talked about quite a bit. And you've got the proposal and there is a brief overview of it, plus you've got 50 pages of the proposal. Would you like to say something, Trust, Director Austin?
Thank you. Yeah. So I want to reiterate again what what this process is. There's a lot of acronyms here, so I'm going to try to make it simple for everyone's purposes. RFID, radio frequency identification, is a is a method that we use in libraries to manage the inventories of our collection. Essentially, what this does is it places a radio frequency target inside of our items. In retail environments, these same targets are used to manage inventory as a loss prevention measure. In libraries, it's a way of adding some metadata to our collection in an effort to better track the usage of our collections, to maintain an inventory of what's on the shelf, to maintain an inventory of what walks out the door through the security gates that doesn't get checked out, to handle items being checked out in general, to facilitate that process, as well as to facilitate the process of returning those items. From an inventory standpoint, the exciting thing about this RFID process is that it allows us to do a better maintenance of our collections. The this this hand tool that allows us to scan a shelf and determine if anything is out of order is a really modern way of doing the shelf reading that we're already doing. It is also a way to simultaneously identify usage of the collections and for librarians to have a better sense of what their collections are when they're in the stacks, doing their collection management duties. For circulation staff, this is the real benefit is that it, our current method of checking out is to open up our items, find the barcode and scan it as as we do for each individual item. That takes a little bit more time for each transaction that we're doing with our patrons at the circulation desk. And by having RFID targets in these items, you can simply stack those items on top of a digital pad. It reads everything that's on the pad and instantly checks it out to the patron without the repetitive motion. So it eliminates some ergonomic concerns with the day to day management of the collections for circulation purposes. When items are returned, an automated material handling system, an AMH, can do the same thing on the backend. A conveyor belt system will receive the materials that are returned in the book drop, will identify which items belong in which collections and will sort them into their respective bins. So those are kind of the key elements of of this particular project. Willmet Library has been considering an RFID system for an extended period of time. For well, well over a decade, it's been in our resolution amending a plan as a special capital project that we could tee up at any point. When we were analyzing our opportunities, looking for potential projects that we could work on during the pandemic, particularly this winter, we identified this as a project that would be ripe for us to attend to right now for a number of reasons. One, as this as this project allows us to move towards a more contactless way of handling our collection in the middle of a pandemic, we thought that that was a great step for us to take, particularly with the check in aspect when we're quarantining our items for an extended period of time. It also facilitates self checkout, which would also be a great boon to our pandemic response plan. But even better, the actual labor for putting the targets in the in the in the collection is a very time consuming process. And in the in a time period when we when we may need to find special projects for part time staff in the event that we need move back towards a stage like we were in early March through June, this would be an excellent project for us to to get our staff engaged with managing the collection and putting the targets in the individual items. Some libraries would contract with a separate jobber to to complete that labor. We feel it's an advantage for us right now, just given the opportunity of this timing, for our own staff to handle the collection. The added benefit of that is that the staff becomes even more familiar with our collections. Even better, we become aware if we have some potential collection management projects that we're working on simultaneously, we can run reports and the tagging software will identify an item that may be flagged for weeding or for another special project so that we don't inadvertently tag an item that doesn't need to be tagged. So there's a number of opportunities that we thought were just an exceptional, that this was an exceptional project for us to work on. So, given all of that, we we put our package together and posted our project to bid in late August. And we collected all of the bids that you see on that bid tabulation sheet. We're very impressed with the response that we received from the leading RFID vendors in the library world. And we were particularly impressed with two of them, but one of them really stood out, and that's the one that's before you this evening. As you know, back in in May, we approved the purchase of two new self checkout units for the library from Biblioteca. Those are the Self Check 500 units that are currently installed by the the former coffee bar in front of the recent arrivals area. And the second one was relocated from the circulation desk up to the youth services area. The one in youth services, we installed that just in the last month, has been a huge success. We're getting a lot of positive feedback from patrons that are using that, saying it's far easier to use than our previous units. And it's actually the the configuration of it makes it easier for patrons, even even without the RFID in it currently. It's great for picture books. Just the shape of it makes it easier for the circulation of those collections. The the other units were just a little bit smaller. So anyway. The public's already familiar with with Biblioteca products. I have experience working with Biblioteca at previous libraries I've worked at. Our neighbors to the north have have a have a solution in place there at Winnetka Northfield, and that's kind of what opened up my my consideration of the automated material handling system as that library is substantially smaller than ours and I saw that they were able to fit an AMH in a very small space back a house there. When we initially put this project out to bid in August, Biblioteca went the extra mile to win our business. They actually were the only vendor that bid on our project that wanted to come out and do a physical site visit. And they brought out a consultant who measured the space that we were considering for the AMH and wanted to put together a proposal that was scalable to our space. So you can see that I pulled that that detail is on the second page of their pricing where they actually developed a schematic for what that system would look like. What's even more alluring to me about this system is that it's entirely modular. So we can adopt the system now in this space. And going forward, with any future renovation that we do, or if we decide that we want to relocate this elsewhere, we'll be able to pick up that equipment and build onto it. I love that. I think that's really cool. It allows us to take advantage of this unique technology today and grow into it over time. We wouldn't have to wait. The other solutions that were proposed were, I guess, you know, we certainly considered them as alternates and we probably would have. If we were to go with a different vendor, we wouldn't have gone with their automated material handling system because we knew it wouldn't have fit. But this one, this one does, and we're excited about that. I was greatly impressed by Biblioteca's presentation. They were one of two vendors that offered to provide a demonstration of their of their proposal after it was submitted. And they answered a lot of questions for us and gave us references from other agencies. They are endorsed by Innovative Interfaces, our vendor for Polaris, our integrated library system. So we know that it certainly is compatible with that. And a number of CCS member libraries like us have this system already in place. So patrons throughout the CCS system, as well as our own patrons, are familiar with this equipment in other libraries, too. So for those reasons and the fact that Biblioteca was ultimately the low bidder on our project, we were very satisfied with the results that they proposed. So at this at this point, they've got a really strong proposal. There are 150 pages behind this tab in your packet. And Gail Justman and I went through and we we read all these proposals. Staff considered everything. And if you've got any any questions about the particulars, the logistics, about anything that's included in this proposal, I would be more than happy to to address any of those questions at this time.
Can the library stay in operation while the system's installed?
Definitely.
Okay.
I have a comment and a question. You've certainly done due diligence and and you know, it's not a major chunk of change, but it's it's sizable. So I commend you and the staff for doing the the due diligence that you needed. I was just intrigued when you mentioned some sort of a conveyor belt return. I I envisioned the miles of conveyor belts that Amazon, six miles I read recently. I know that's not the the image I should have, but could you just briefly describe that? Just I'm I'm kind of curious.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, I'm there, there are a couple illustrations. I'm gonna I'm gonna share my screen with you. If I can do that, give me just a second here to figure this out because there are some illustrations in here and I think that might help to tell the story a bit. All right, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
All right, so this this illustration right here is of the automated material handling system. So there are multiple bins on this. This one has seven bins. The one that we're that we're looking at has three because the space that we're looking at is certainly small and can't accommodate six miles of conveyor belts. What what is out of view on this screen is there's kind of like this dump area over here, which is where the conveyor belt system starts. So the return is is over here on this side and the materials come into this, go up this conveyor belt. And then as the materials pass over these rollers, the computer at this stage here is telling it where each of these items is is supposed to go. So for example, one of these bins is probably designated for youth services, the second floor. One of these items is designated for adult nonfiction, the lower level. One of these bins is allocated for items that belong to other libraries like Evanston or Winnetka. And when the item passes over these rollers after it's gone over the computer, the computer tells the rollers which way to push the item. There's some illustrations that demonstrate this and it's really cool to see this thing in action. And in fact, the vendors have for all of these products are recommending that kids love them. And if you have the ability to put some kind of a glass wall in front of it so folks can watch it, it's really fun to see it all kind of in motion. We really don't have the space to do that right now, but it's certainly a consideration to look at when we go forward with a project like this in the future. So if you kind of scroll through their proposal, you're going to see some other examples of the conveyor belt system. But what I wanted to show you here is the system that we're discussing right now. This was the one that was designed for us. This wall here, where this black box is, is the the book drop on the west entrance of the library, so adjacent to the vestibule. These book drops are currently closed right now because the space is really occupied with all of our holds for for circulation. This area is kind of a tight space. So we've kept this area closed right now. The primary returns for the library when the library is open are in the vestibule and in front of the the circulation desk, as well as in the parking lot. And the parking lot drops are open 24/7. If there were a way to put in some kind of an underground conveyance that would come into the library underneath the parking lot, yeah. You know, that would be one way to adopt the system there. But for right now, we're just looking at, you know, what's attached to the building and this is the space that was was designated. So here you can see the computer would be in this location and the rollers are right here and we've got a bin for, you know, out of system materials, a bin for adult, a bin for youth, or however we're going to designate it. And then there's still this space over here for returns that would come directly from the vestibule. Kind of a tight space, so I imagine we would likely eliminate this. And at this time, right now, we've already eliminated this during the pandemic. It just isn't an option for us. But in any event, this is this is the solution that we're looking at. If you go on, I would be more than happy to share with you some links of these things in action so you could see some examples. Biblioteca did give me some videos and shared some examples from other libraries that are doing it. So I'd be happy to share that with you. But we're really excited about it and I think the public's going to love it. And I know the staff is going to find that it's going to be a great convenience for them as well. Other other questions or comments about the RFID?
Just exactly. I'm not clear on where that machinery would be in our library.
Yes, so you're standing at the front entrance outside the library by the flagpole on the entry plaza. Immediately to your left, between the media room and the vestibule entrance are a series of three book drops that are attached to the building. This automated material handling system would link up with those book drops and would be installed in that circulation, kind of what we call the alley behind the circulation desk. It's a very small space. It is not something if we were to design it today, we certainly wouldn't design it the way that it is. However.
Anthony, I posted a photo of the front of the library, if that helps.
Oh, there. Hey, look at that. Stuart rocks. Thank you. So what we're talking about is is right here. If you can see my, oh, no, you can't. I'm not showing my screen.
Can I point? You can, let's see.
If you can see the logo of the library, look at this, just a little bit. There you go. He's pointing right at it. That's it. So it's going to be right behind that. Very clever, Stuart. Thank you.
Sure, if it helps.
Does that make sense, Jen?
Yeah.
Those two inboxes that you can drop, you can drop stuff in. That's where they were.
So there will still be room, I assume, for the librarians behind the desk to pass each other without jumping over the machinery?
Yeah, yeah. The the space is not behind the circulation desk. It's in in an adjacent area that kind of extends in a what we call an alley. There's a narrow hallway behind the circulation desk that connects with that west entrance and that's that's the area we're looking at.
Okay. Sounds fun.
Yeah. And for any of you who want like a a personal tour of that space, just let me know and I'd be happy to take you back there and show you what we're talking about in person.
We first looked at a similar system with RFID and actually the library in Gurnee. We went up and visited there, actually, a group of, I think, most of the trustees went up at the time and viewed that. That was at least 12 years ago. In our tradition of not being the first to adopt such technologies, we did not incorporate that into the next two library projects. However, one of the benefits of not being a first adopter is that the price of this system has come way down. It's a lot less expensive than what Gurnee invested in it. And by now, Gurnee's probably had to replace much of what they initially installed that we looked at. They had conveyors. They had conveyors that actually allowed people to feed materials they were returning into a conveyor system that carried it into the library and through a sorting system that, that took up a lot more space than we had available. And that's the reason we didn't pursue it at the time. But this is, you know, a step forward in how we handle materials and in making it easier to track who has what and, and getting it back into the library appropriately. So, you know, this is a step that we've had. As, as Anthony said, we've had it on our list, our to-do list for many years. And one of the benefits of not being a first adopter is that it's going to cost us a lot less than it would have if we jumped on it 12 to 15 years ago. I move that we approve the contract for installation of the RFID system by Biblioteca. The included support and, and hardware for a price of $175,000.
I'll second that.
It's also eligible as a capital expense. So this will very likely come out entirely out of reserve fund.
That's correct.
Trusty Rogers, what amount did you approve that for?
$175.
Okay, thank you. So trustee Rogers has moved and trustee Wolf has seconded the purchase of the RFID system with supplies, equipment and support. Any other discussion?
No, but we could probably sell tickets if we set it up right.
Yeah. We can do a double feature of that and the geothermal process is going on.
Okay, so can we have a vote? Roll call, please.
Sure. Trusty Barshis, yes. Trusty Fishman?
Yes.
Trusty Johnson?
Yes.
Trusty Riddle?
Yes.
Trusty Rogers?
Yes.
Trusty Wolf?
Yes.
Trusty McDonald?
Yes. We're now switching over to the, to talk about the ordinance. And that was, you know, what we talked about at the finance committee. And I think we brought it forward post that at the last board meeting. And so we'll turn it over to trustee Rogers and director Austin.
Okay, what, what you see before us is a proposal to maintain the levy at the same amount as it has been for the last two years with a zero increase in the amount of the levy. This, as in the past two years, does represent dipping somewhat into our operating reserves. The, but that's not a problem. We've actually, when we get to reporting on the finance committee's deliberations, we'll also address the policies that are under consideration for dealing with reserve funds. But for purposes of this action, what we're, what the finance committee approved and is recommending is that we adopt the levy at the same amount as it has been for the last two years, which represents a zero increase. There is some shifting in the allocation of funds, but the, the levy amount, the levy total amount is the same. So I move approval of the levy for the coming fiscal year in the amount of $5,421.251. I'm sorry, $5,428.251.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by trustee Rogers and seconded by trustee Wolf that we do the levy at $5,428, $5,428,251, reflecting a zero change in the tax levy. Discussion? Trusty Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank director Austin. He gave me very, you know, great written answers to my questions. So I want to put that on the record. So I appreciate that, Anthony. I'm a no on this for this one basic reason. It all has to do with the amount of money that are in our operating funds and our capital reserve fund. To my judgment, they're both twice as big as they need to be. And if there was ever a year when we drained those funds and gave some property taxpayers some relief, it'd be in a pandemic economic recession year when people are going to have the hardest time paying property taxes. So that's my statement and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Trusty Riddle?
Yeah, I was wondering if there was any other modeling done with a decrease mainly. I'm, I think I'm also a no for this evening. I wanted to know if in the committee there was any other modeling done for a decrease.
We were looking at, and trustee Rogers can answer. We were looking at making, I think if you have a, in terms of, so we would keep in the levy so that if we ever, it would not be reduced. And you can explain, I think, three years, if they see a reduction in the levy, then you cannot raise. But I don't know the law per se.
Yeah, you have a period of time where you can't raise it. Well, averages, but sorry, sorry. Were you going to continue?
If we lower it three years in a row, if we lower the levy three years in a row, then we, we lock in our, our, our ceiling on what we can raise it if we need to do so in the future. By holding it level right now, it gives us flexibility over the next three years to lower it based on conditions that trustee Johnson was just talking about. So from a, a practical standpoint, and someone else can speak on this if they want to as well, but my understanding is this is our best time to not lower the levy. And again, we are not raising the levy based on sensitivity of what's going on around COVID. But, but at the same time, to keep it, to keep it level, to not raise it, but not to lower it, is going to be what's best for the library functioning and financing. And thereby extension will therefore be the, the best way to serve the community, to offer the services that the library has been doing and will continue to do so going forward. Again, by next year, if things, if, you know, COVID's not going to go away tomorrow. Unfortunately, if you look at science, it's going to be here for at least another year in a very impactful way. So come next year, when we have this discussion, by keeping the levy right now at its level without lowering it, we can lower it as much as we want next year and not penalize the library and again, not penalize the community. So that's why I feel very strongly about, I understand trustee Johnson's concerns, but I believe, I believe it's, it's not, it doesn't have the right foundation right now for what he's expressing based on the parameters under which we have to operate moving forward.
Plus, looking at the capital needs and how it's been defined, going out the study, we need, we, we don't have quite enough for that. And so we had slowly built up a reserve to take care of those needs. And if you look at all the stuff that was passed today that we've approved, that you can see a little bit as to, a lot of it will happen probably in the next three years in terms of those. And that's just basically maintaining the library. It's not any dramatic improvements. It's just maintenance and keeping the infrastructure up. Trusty Rogers, do you have something to say?
Part of what we're looking at here is we represent 4% of the property tax in Willmet. The major responsibility we have to the residents of Willmet is to maintain the library services that they have requested from us in our periodic long-range planning and in the requests for services that we get as we continue operations. This budget does that. We have from time to time asked residents what services they want from us. That's what the long-range planning process is about. We have not needed to conduct a rate referendum since 2001 because of the careful management of the 4% to 5% of their taxes that the library has represented since that time. And so we've been very cautious and careful in managing resources. That's why we've been able to create the reserves that enable us to maintain the building and to maintain services at the levels that have been requested. If there are special circumstances that require that we consider a different approach, we'll certainly be able to do that in future years. But for right now, we have capital needs identified that exceed the amount of our current reserves. And we want to be sure that we don't shortchange the ability to maintain the library to continue to provide those services. So this levy does that. We will, over the course of the next year, be adopting additional policies and updating our financial policies with respect to reserve funds. And we will take another look at this once we've had the opportunity for the board to complete the consideration of those issues. The finance committee has reviewed a part of these policies and we'll talk about that a little bit later in this meeting. But we're not through with that process. Once the finance committee is complete, has completed this process, it will go to the policy committee and then to the board. So we have a number of things underway that are going to impact future years. But for right now, we're maintaining a flat levy in order to make sure that we don't compromise our ability to keep the building safe and secure for staff and patrons.
And just adding one more, adding one more thing to what trustee Rogers said.
I'd like to answer.
Oh, anybody who's curious, on the Willmet Library website, you can see a complete breakdown of where the, how tax money is, is, is drawn, how much tax money is drawn to each taxing body in Willmet. And as trustee Rogers said, it's 4% that goes to the library, which on a $15,500 real estate tax bill is a $600 amount from, from, of your, of your real estate tax amount.
Trusty Riddle, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth discussing more. I wasn't at the finance committee meeting and I think we've set ourselves up pretty well this year that we could afford a decrease in this, in the levy. And I don't think it would, I don't think it would hold us back next year or the year after with the capital expenses that we have. You know, especially knowing that we just had the, the Enberg Anderson report come back and we're, we're taking care of, I think, the code and kind of like, you know, more emergency-like capital costs now. So that really, I don't think we were, I think we're set up. I think that we have the ability to reduce, reduce the levy here. You know, we're like an average household and I'm just trying to speak for kind of the average, you know, working family here that I'm, we have a single income. We have children in remote learning. Right now, it's even really tough for me and my husband to stomach the property bill for, for, because of the school percentage. We're not even in school right now. I mean, we're using very little of the school resources right now. We're, our kids aren't in any specialty classes, Spanish, music. When you're in remote, you're very, you've got very little, you know, contact, I guess, and, and with, with the actual resources that District 39 can, can offer. And going forward, already the Willmet services, Willmet usage, community usage of, of the library is down. And I don't expect it to, you know, it could stay this, at this level and maybe, maybe increase a bit, but I can't see it, you know, going back to its, you know, last year's level within the next two years. And I just think that this is the time to consider further discussion on this and probably a decrease. I don't think we're ready to vote on this.
Thank you, trustee Riddle. Any other comments? The motion is on the floor. It's been moved and seconded that we keep a the levy for a flat levy of $5,428,251,000. Can we have a roll call?
Trusty Barshis, yes. Trusty Fishman?
Yes.
Trusty Johnson?
No.
Trusty Riddle?
No.
Trusty Rogers?
Yes.
Trusty Wolf?
Yes.
Trusty McDonald?
Yes. The motion, the levy passed, five in favor, two nays.
I just want to add, I understand what trustee Riddle's concerns are and I agree with everything you said, trustee Riddle. But again, keep in mind that the, like, again, I'm not sure what your real estate taxes are. You don't have to disclose it. But for someone who, again, who has a $15,500 real estate tax bill over the course of the year, the library amount is only $600. So that's not a, I mean, everything adds up. I understand that. But again, on top of that, we have a very important assessment year going forward in terms of the library. As both trustee Rogers and library director Austin pointed out, with Enberg Anderson's plan, we're going to be spending most of the capital reserve that we already have. So what in my mind is a worse thing to do is to, first of all, if we lower the levy, then that becomes our ceiling going forward.
I mean, I disagree. I disagree. I think we're set up. I think we're, I think we're set up. And I don't, I, I mean, if you would like to, if you wanted to discuss this more with me, we could have done it before the vote and we're
Oh, sure. I'm sensitive to your comments is what I'm saying, but
I don't feel like you're, okay, this is a monologue.
Move it on to the next topic.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Because we had the discussion and it, the motion passed, so it's the next topic, which
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is related to the last item that we did. The, so we passed a levy ordinance and this next bid is a formality that is our instructions to Cook County related to the action that we just took. And this is our resolution. So this reinforces the action that we just took. So we'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution administering the levy.
I motion we approve the, 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 this, this, this next phase, this next step.
And I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded by, moved by trustee Wolf and seconded by trustee Fishman to approve Resolution 2020-21, slash 21-203, instructions to the Cook County clerk regarding the Willmet Public Library District 2021 levy.
What this motion does is instructs the county clerk to apply any limitation on implementation of our levy to the corporate fund only and not to the special funds. The special funds are RMR, Social Security, the audit fund. And there's a fourth one there that I'm forgetting at the moment. But the bottom line is, these, these are, these funds are mandated by state law. And we instruct the county not to increase the amount of the levies in those special funds. And if there is a limitation, that it be applied in the general fund, corporate fund only.
Thank you, trustee Rogers. Trusty Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. Is this just like a legal formality we have to do with no real substantive impact?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, it is. So motion's been moved and approved. Can we have a vote, roll call and discussions?
Trustee Barshes, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, it's a formality, I'm happy to vote yes.
Trustee Riddle?
Obstain.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes. The motion passed with six yays and one abstention. And the next, I am hotness today. Okay. So next up is the holiday closing for calendar 2021, attachment 12. And is there a motion? And basically, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine paid holidays plus one staff institute day, if it all ever opens up. Is there a motion to approve the Willmet Public Library District 2021 calendar?
I still move.
Okay, Trustee Fishman has moved to approve it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Trustee Barshes has seconded the motion to approve the Willmet Public Library District 2021 calendar. Any discussion? Let's have a roll call. Trustee Barshes?
Trustee Barshes, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes. The motion passed. All in, with all in favor. Next is the, basically, board authorization of deputy election clerks for the local consolidated election, which will be held on Tuesday, April 6, 2021. Three trustees are, there are three incumbent trustees who turn, whose terms are expiring, Trustee Johnson, Trustee Rogers, and Trustee Wolf. I signed the granting, I signed the document granting permission, approval of having to, and I'm sitting up here looking for it, I missed my miss. But is there an action item in terms of the board approving that?
Well, this is, yeah, so unfortunately, this should have been on the agenda for the September 15 meeting. The document is dated September 17, and in an effort for staff to be able to serve as the deputy election clerks, we needed to take that action. So Lisa took that action so that staff could create the candidate guides and make those guides available to the public who are interested in applying for these positions. So in effect, that we need to do the formality of deputizing the staff to fulfill that role that they've already been doing for the past couple of weeks. So if you could, if you could please just formalize the motion for what we're already doing, we'd appreciate it.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been so moved by Trustee Johnson and seconded by Trustee Barshes that we hereby authorize Nancy Jo Carroll, Marty Belafontaine, and Michael Boone to act as deputy clerks of the upcoming Board of Library, Library Trustees elections. Thank you. Okay, we have a roll call.
Trustee Barshes, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Riddle?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes. The motion passed unanimously. Okay, now we have discussion items, and we'll turn it over to Trustee Rogers to discuss the Finance Committee meeting held on October 5.
Okay, there was one item that did not involve the levy directly that we discussed, and that is that the policy, we're working toward adopting or updating policy with respect to all financial requirements for the library district. And one of those, the first one that we looked at, has to do with what the reserve fund policy should be. On the advice of our attorney, the Finance Committee is recommending that the policy be that the general fund reserves be for one year of expenditures. And so that recommendation is going forward. There are additional requirements that the committee will evaluate in financial policy draft that, that many has not yet seen or acted on. Once the Finance Committee has had the opportunity to receive and review those draft policies, it will then, once the committee has approved it, that will go to the Policy Committee and then on to the Board. So, but what we are recommending is that the reserve, the general fund reserves be set at one year of expenditures, which is consistent with the recommendation from our attorney. That will, at some point, probably involve transferring some funds from the general fund to our building and equipment reserve fund, which will have been spent down somewhat by the projects that we're just beginning. And so, you know, we'll have more information or more detail about these things in the future. But the, the one detail in the, in terms of the committee's actions was to recommend to, to incorporate into our finance policies the one-year reserve in the general fund.
Madam President, is that time for discussion?
Okay, discussion?
So I think it's great that we're finally getting a written policy, but the idea that we need $6 million in the bank, you know, that's the reason why I voted against the levy. You know, the reason why we've been critiqued as having the bank of Willmet is that that fund is one of our major problems, is that there just isn't a justification to have that much money in the bank. So I'm glad that the conversation's moving forward. But as I read the Civic Federation's report, they suggested three months would be appropriate for a local government like us, because we can levy whatever we want, you know? So the justification for $6 million in the bank, to me, there just isn't one, which is why, and that informs the tax policy debate. So appreciate the discussion, and it's nice to crystallize the conversation. And by the way, the, the legal recommendation, I, I'm concerned, I'm glad that we're going to get under the tax objection limit, because if we get too high, you know, somebody can file a tax objection. But I, I hope as the conversation progresses, we can move it to a three or six month instead of a 12 months. Thank you.
Trustee Johnson, you'll get to weigh in on that, come to a Finance Policy Committee meeting, and when it comes before. But I think most libraries keep between six months and a year, based on.
I think there also may be some confusion on the part of the Civic Federation in those recommendations. We do not have the authority to simply levy whatever amount that we might want. The reality is that under the tax cap, we have significant limitations. We are not a home rule body, as the village is, and as larger municipalities are. Their recommendation might make sense in a home rule district. It makes a lot less sense in a municipality that doesn't qualify to, to the exemptions under the tax cap. And so we can have further discussion on the issue, but I don't know of any public body that is subject to the limitations of the tax cap that is routinely able to manage on a three-month reserve. You know, the, that just doesn't make any sense. There are contingencies that can occur, there are emergencies that can occur that, that might make that a real crisis for a small unit of government that does not have unlimited levy capacity, as we, I agree with you under the, we do not have those, you know, we do not have that capacity of capacity to levy whatever we need or want.
Thank you, Trustee Rogers. It should be a interesting discussion when it comes before. We've got Chapter 11 of the, and, which deals with youth and young adult services as part of Anthony's campaign to make sure that the trustees are qualified. And we were lucky to have Mrs. Johnson, Youth Services Manager, speak with us last month. Does anybody have any additional questions or comments regarding this policy?
Well, just, I want to be clear about one thing. So the, the purpose behind these chapter reviews is to, for one thing, for the board to be aware of what the, the standards are for Illinois public libraries. So that's the document that we're reviewing. This is also one of the requirements for our application of the per capita grant. There's an item later in the, in the agenda that I just, I'll just cover right now, it's under the informational items. October is typically the month in which I would present to you our per capita grant application. To date, the State Library has not put together the requirements for our per capita grant application. We anticipate that that will be coming up in the coming month or two. However, we've got on good word that our requirement is to, before the board, review every chapter of the standards. And so that's what we've been doing since I got that word. We've been taking some time each month to go through this guide, chapter by chapter. And so we've made it as far as Chapter 11 now. And as Trustee McDonald indicated, yes, last month, Andrea Johnson, our Youth Services Manager, came and shared a number of these points with us, illustrating the ways in which the library is meeting these standards and exceeding them. I could go on at great length about this, but that's not the point tonight, especially as we've got a lot of stuff to discuss here. So does anyone have any questions about anything specific in these standards or anything you'd like me to touch upon? If not, in front of the meeting, feel free to reach out to me, as always, anytime, and we can talk about this stuff in greater detail. So the next item on the agenda is our monthly update on our pandemic response plan. So the, the news today is that the governor has issued some additional restrictions to the collar counties around Chicagoland, as we're starting to see our COVID numbers starting to increase. Yesterday, Mayor Lightfoot spoke as well about the, the idea or notion that we're going to have to make some further adjustments within Chicagoland. There haven't been any changes that are proposed for Region 10, which is suburban Cook County, which is the region that we fall under. However, staff and I are discussing what the next phases mean. As you're all aware, we have been doing a community survey online this past month and collecting feedback from our patrons about a number of our programs and services, our hours, our COVID response, the whole scope of services that we're offering. And in trying to adapt our services to meet the needs of the community, we're also simultaneously looking at these figures. And as has been our practice since March and, and prior to our decision to close the library due to the pandemic, we're taking all of our steps out of an abundance of caution. Now, this evening, I might very well have come to you and said, hey, you know, this would, this would be a great time for us to either expand our hours, to offer some new services, to consider a different programming model. That said, looking at the, at the figures that we're seeing right now, this just does not seem like a moment for us to be making a shift, to plan ahead a couple of weeks to be, you know, expanding our services when we very well might see ourselves at that same time being told to contract our services. So I think the point of this conversation tonight is to illustrate what our plan is going forward. So in the event that we see some further restrictions that are imposed upon us, I think it's an important distinction for me to note that there hasn't been specifications clearly delineated for public libraries. We've largely been left out of this conversation, and we've kind of had to be on our own and kind of develop our own plans. I think, speaking on behalf of all libraries, I think that's made it very challenging, but I think public libraries have really risen to the occasion. And for the most part, all libraries are open right now, and a number of them are operating fairly successfully. Our figures indicate that our patrons are satisfied with the services that they're receiving, as our circulation is only down 4% from what it was last year. Obviously, our door counts are down, but I think that's a reflection of our community's understanding that we are in a pandemic, and folks are still taking advantage of either parking lot pickup, or they're using digital services, or trying to get their services with any of our modified methods. So what does it look like if the library does have to move back a step? And we've talked about this a bit before, but I want to refresh everyone about where we're at with this. So in March, when the numbers were spiking and we were all encouraged to close, and we did so in partnership with all the other village agencies. We did so with the schools, with the village, the park district, et cetera. Today, if there were some, if we were to move into a different tier or phase and have to relax, or roll back, rather, some of our services, what would that mean? I think it's different than it was in March. I don't think at this stage it would mean that the library would have to physically close the building. I think it would mean that we'd have to analyze the ways in which we're providing our services. We need to keep people safe. I think we're doing that. We're already doing that through social distancing, through capacity limits, through barriers, through limiting access to certain services by removing seating, encouraging people to come in and get their business done and move on. The science that we understand suggests that the pandemic is, is a respiratory virus that is spread through droplets in the air. There is not any substantial evidence to suggest that the virus is passing on physical objects. We're going to continue to quarantine our materials, and we're doing so with the suggestion of the best science that's available to us. However, I don't think that we're, that if we were to move back a step, that it would necessarily mean that, that we're going to be closing the building altogether, or that we, we would be sending our staff home altogether. I don't think that's where we're at right now. Now, that said, if these numbers do increase radically, and if we see a local outbreak, then that would prompt a completely different response, and we're, we're prepared to do that as well. Now we have the infrastructure in place, we have the methods where we can do parking lot pickup, where we can expand our delivery services, where we can provide other means, we've already developed these means, we've already developed ways that we can provide our services. So I don't think that we need the time in a closed environment to develop the services that are, that we've already been using for the last six months. So we're just, I think, you know, long story short, I think we're looking at these numbers cautiously, and at this stage, I feel comfortable with the methods that we're using, and we'll continue to study them. But I don't think that we're seeing a closure of the library as an imminent step, even as we're seeing the impacts on some local businesses, primarily restaurants, being told that they need to alter their methods of their service. So for right now, here on October 20, I think it's business as new normal for the time being. But I'm happy to entertain any questions about some specifics, if there's some things on your mind that you'd like to discuss.
Briefly, did we, on the delivery thing, did we get the hybrid?
We did. So thank you, Dan, yes. At, at our last meeting, the board did approve that we move forward with the purchase of the vehicle. So we did purchase a vehicle. I shared that information with the board right after we purchased the car. At our purchase price was, was at $42,000 and change. So we got a good deal on the vehicle, and it is here in the parking lot. The charging station was installed this past week, and staff right now are developing their procedures and getting prepared to train on how to use this new, what we're calling spaceship. It's really weird. The cockpit of this van is, is quite different than what a lot of us are used to driving. It's, it's very technology-forward, and a lot of things to kind of distract you as you're driving. So anyone who's going to be driving that vehicle, we're going to send them through a little bit of a training program, so they all know how to use it before they hit the streets with it. The vehicle, as I, as we discussed previously, is going to be used for a number of purposes. The purposes relate to outreach and community engagement purposes, as well as delivery to patrons, partner agencies like preschools and schools, and the park districts, as well as being used. and the park districts, as well as being used as a vehicle that we can collect our remote book drops. We've been talking for a time about when it will be appropriate for us to open the remote book drops. One of the contingencies that I've talked about there is the hire of our facilities manager. We've been down some staff, and it's been difficult for us to scale up appropriately to offer that service again. I think we're getting close. As I'll report here in a moment, we've filled our position for our facilities manager. So, that was, that's a critical step. He'll be starting in his role in the middle of November. So, we've got a few weeks ahead of us yet before we're fully staffed in the department. That said, as we're looking at the rise in numbers, it's, we kind of need to, we need to be thinking, is this the appropriate time for us to reopen those book drops? But once we get that new staff member in place, that will give us more space and time to be able to go out and retrieve those if, in fact, we do reopen them. And I think at that time, we'll be able to make a better decision based upon our resources. But the vehicle itself will go into service for delivery purposes in the next several weeks once we get the staff trained on that. We are still designing the wrap. As we've talked about, we want to try to beautify this thing and brand it as being a library vehicle. Staff has begun that process and is working with a vendor to get the vehicle wrapped. So, hopefully by this time next month, I'll be able to report on that and/or share the new vehicle. So, stay tuned. I'll have more information to share with you at that time. Other questions about the pandemic or the library's response to thereof?
I think I made a suggestion that, at some point, that the idea that the vehicle that you have is a hybrid could be highlighted somehow so people would realize that that was what the vehicle was. So, I think that's important for those of us who are interested in air quality and everything else like that in the environment.
Thank you, Jan. Yep, we will incorporate that.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments about the library's pandemic response plan?
Can we move on to your annual, your report?
Okay, thank you. We are getting on to 8 o'clock here. Thank you all for sticking around and for your patience with all of our business tonight. I will try to keep my report brief and leave it open for your questions. Still a lot going on in the library, as I indicated. Our circulation is still performing incredibly strongly. We are just 4% below where we were this time last year. That reflects a high level of engagement with our collections from the public. Our ebook collections are starting to kind of level off a little bit in terms of circulation. About 50% increase over where we were earlier this year. We're seeing more folks are checking out physical materials now than the digital. So, I think it worked well for folks who weren't coming in the building, but now that folks have open browsing inside the building, we're seeing more of that kind of traffic and browsing here. Anecdotally, I would say that there have been, in the last couple of weeks, more people coming in the building who are visiting us for the first time in many months. I've heard about some folks coming into Youth Services recently who have not been in the library since we reopened in June. So, that's kind of, that's been interesting to see those folks and to reintroduce them to our services. The community survey data, I wanted to comment on that briefly. It's still in progress. The survey is still out there. It's on the front page of our website. If you've not already completed the survey, we'd love to hear from you. We've gotten 400 and some responses to date. Overwhelmingly, the data right now suggests that patrons are really satisfied with the virtual services that they're receiving, although about half of the patrons who responded to the survey indicate that they do not attend programming, period. The overwhelming majority of those who do attend programming learn about all of our services online. In fact, we were surprised in the data that suggests that more folks are enjoying digital newsletters and the frequency with which we're sending out our e-blasts than the print newsletter. And that's a bit of a shift from some of the data that we've received in past surveys that we've done where we've relied upon the print newsletter as our primary communication tool. So, we're really looking to re-engage with folks digitally. We do want to continue to use mailings. I'm sure you've received a few postcards recently advertising some of our events. We're still going to use that as a method to connect with folks. However, we do not foresee offering a print newsletter as we did this time last year. I think until we've got a better handle on what our programming options are going to be physically going forward. So, I think the newsletter is going to be on hold for a while. I see Jan's got our Arshay Cooper newsletter in front of her, or postcard in front of her there.
Yes.
And I'll get to that here in a second, too. So, a couple of other details I want to share with you from my report. We're excited. This week, District 39 is starting a soft rollout of the Overdrive Sora project. I've talked about this previously. This is a partnership between D-39 and the library where D-39 is now launching an Overdrive ebook platform for their students that supports the curriculum. In our partnership, what that does is for residents and students of D-39, they're simultaneously able to get access to the library's Overdrive collections with their D-39 registration. So, we're excited about that. As I said, it's a soft rollout. Not all the students have been trained on it internally, but that's a process that they're going through. It is going to be introduced at the board meeting for D-39 later this month. So, that board and staff will formally get that introduction at that time. I'll be tuning in to hear what Tony DiMonte has to say about it at that meeting. So, we're excited about that, and we're interested to see what those impacts are going to be and what kind of increase in usage we're going to see for our youth collections as a result of that. Speaking of our digital resources for kids, we have a special page that's dedicated to homework help on our website, and I'm going to share this very briefly with you so you can see this page. Technology, here we go. So, this is our homework help page. And on the homework help page, you can see that we've got a new product called Scholastic Teachables, which offers print worksheets, lesson plans, reading passages, and fun activities for elementary subjects, including math, science, reading comprehension, writing, and more. This is a product that a lot of parents have been asking for by name, and we're thrilled to be able to offer this along with our host of other resources that are helping to support at-home learning, including Brainfuse, which is another one that's been really popular this fall. We've seen an uptick in usage of Brainfuse. That is a free live tutoring service that's available from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. where you can get live homework help. So, do check out the homework help pages. While I'm sharing my screen, I'll also share with you our new Storytimes page. So, our virtual Storytimes have been, have just ramped up this past week with live Storytimes. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we've been extending our parents on our parent survey. For summer reading, indicated that they wanted to see more live programming. So, that's what our youth staff have been working on a lot lately. You can see our schedule there for Storytimes. And then you can also see that we've got an archive of all of our videos that's being posted. And that first one there is from Andrea for baby time, and that was recorded just earlier today. So, that was a live presentation and has been archived and is displayed now on our website. As you scroll down, you see all of the programs. Gosh, there's so much creativity going on with our staff. You can access all of our Storytime playlists and everything that's been archived beyond the most current ones by clicking through to our Facebook Storytime playlist and YouTube Storytimes as well. So, that's the story with those items. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
Oh, pun intended. Oh, you just said, that's a story with that item. Nope.
And I was just wondering if those two trustees with young children have used these resources. Fina or Dan?
Pun intended. Joan, not yet. It's a good question. I'm excited about the District 39 integration stuff. And if, I don't know if you've met Billy Dennis, who's the tech guy over at D-39, Anthony. He'd probably be worth talking to as well. But not yet. Thank you, though. And then, I don't know if you heard me, I tried to make a joke that, no pun intended, that that was a story on those items, Anthony.
Thanks. I love a good pun. All right. Let's see. A couple of other items I can share with you here briefly. Gosh, I don't, I've got so many things I'd love to tell you about, about the library, but I know it's getting late. I would like to get to your question, so let me just do that. I'm going to press pause on my, on my talk, and you talk to me. What do you want to know about what's happening? Is there anything that you saw in my report that you'd like additional detail on? Anything that you would like me to pull out and discuss a little bit more for you all?
This is just a comment. I am so impressed by the two upcoming programs, the one tomorrow night and then the one in November.
Thank you. Yeah, let me, let me talk a little bit about those. Those are clearly some items I'd love to talk about.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, the first item is an event tomorrow night. This is our very first virtual author event. Each fall for the last 15 years, we've been hosting Meet the Author. And last fall, we had Susan Orlean, and this fall, we have Arshay Cooper. You can see Stuart is showing us his background. It is the cover of Arshay Cooper's book, A Most Beautiful Thing, which is the subject of tomorrow night Zoom meeting at 7:00 p.m. We have 450 people registered for this event. And we are partnering with Semi Colon Books on the near north side, which is a black woman-owned bookstore that's working with us to provide copies of the book. And they're providing signed book plates from Arshay Cooper as well. There's a really excellent documentary film that accompanies his wonderful memoir about the first all-black high school rowing team at Manley High on the west side. Arshay's story is amazing, and the documentary is just so captivating. I watched it last night, and I actually am looking forward to seeing it again. A really well-done piece, and since this is about Chicagoland, it's really wonderful to see our city and to learn more about the people right here in our community. Obviously, as rowing is of interest to our immediate community up here, is very popular in New Trier. We know that there's already a lot of interest with folks here locally. So, we're thrilled about Arshay Cooper's event tomorrow. I encourage you all to tune in and check it out. We're also excited on November 9th, which is a Monday night. We're partnering with 10 other libraries to host Dr. Ibram X. Kendi, who's the number-one New York Times bestselling author of How to Be an Anti-Racist. We've featured his materials previously, and he has, he's been to our region before. He was been a, he hosted an event, or a fan, the Family Action Network, hosted an event with him last year. And he's a wonderful speaker, and we're all thrilled to be able to bring him forward for all of our library communities. We've got thousands of people registered for this event already. So, if you're interested in attending that, that's going to be a wonderful conversation, and we encourage you to tune in for that. Information about all this is in my packet as well as on our webpage.
Anthony, one question. Oh, go ahead.
Anthony, will you be videotaping the rowing video if you can, on the website? Do you have the rights to do that?
We're working out those details. We will be recording the event. However, the way that we publicize or the way that we promote that video that we record is still kind of up in the air at the moment. So, I don't know if that's going to end up on our YouTube page or on our webpage or whatnot, but it will be recorded.
And how are you going to handle, are you going to have a Q&amp;A section?
Yes, we are. So, patrons who have, who would like to ask Arshay direct questions can do so. There's a, there's a Q&amp;A portion in Zoom. If you look at the bottom of your Zoom chat panel right now, you'll see that there's a chat button. In that same location, there'll be a Q&amp;A button. And then you can directly type in your question there, and then that will go to the moderators. And the moderators will then go through and make sure that those questions, they'll kind of cluster similar questions together and then help present those to our speaker. So, it will be interactive.
Do you plan on showing his movie?
We don't have plans for that initially. However, it is free to stream right now via the Peacock app, the NBC app. So, that might be on your smart TV or is certainly available on your phone, and then you can, you know, cast it to your TV. Definitely worth checking out, as I said before. I loved it. Other questions about either of those two events? Stuart?
I was, actually, Trustee McDonald asked a question I was going to ask both about tomorrow night's event and for Dr. Kendi. Will those be available to library patrons if they can't attend during the live portion? So.
Yeah, and we are not the primary coordinator for the Kendi event. However, I anticipate that that will be recorded and available.
Thank you.
I could just affirm that both of those books are really worth reading. And I learned a lot from Arshay Cooper's book. He's a good writer, and the story flows very well. And I've read some of the How to Be an Anti-Racist, and that one really makes you think, too. Lot of good stuff there.
All right. Were there any other points in my report that you wanted me to go over specifically? Or anything that caught your eye? All right, then I'm going to leave it at that. I will say, I want to give you an update briefly on staffing. I said I would do that. So, there, the library has, due to the pandemic, has seen some unprecedented times in the last several months. And I'm not, I'm not looking for anyone to kind of pat me on the back right now and tell me everything's going to be okay, but I will say, this has been an unusual time for us and my HR manager, Mike Boone. We have been working pretty hard to make sure that the staff is taken care of, and there have been a lot of challenges thrown at us. One of the great benefits of this organization is the fact that it takes really good care of its staff. And because of that, we've had a very loyal staff for a long time. The average tenure of our team until recently has been well over 20 years. And because of that, a number of folks come to work for Willmatt Library, and they choose to stay here through their retirement. And when I say through their retirement, I mean that, too. They retire from the library, and then they continue to work with us. But what's happened this year is we've seen quite a wave of retirements, and that's had a big impact. And that impact especially has hit our leadership team. In fact, the leadership team has largely turned over in just the time that I've been here, primarily due to retirements. So, I just want to kind of paint that picture for you briefly. You may recall when I first started here, my first task was to hire a Youth Services Manager, and that's what brought in Andrea Johnson. This spring, in February, our finance manager, Barbara Griffiths, retired. Then, our Adult Services Manager, Betty Griffiths, I'm sorry, Betty Georgie, retired. Then, two of our senior librarians, who had been here for collectively over 70 years, retired. Our circulation manager retired in July. Our office manager, Cynthia, retired at that time as well. She was my admin. In August, our facilities manager retired. And just now, our technical services manager and IT manager, Gail Justman, has announced her retirement. So, we've got quite a lot of turnover. Yeah, there's Marty's reaction. That's a perfect reaction. The good news is that Gail has agreed to stay on with us. Part of the motivation for, I think, some of these recent retirements, this also affects our Assistant Manager for Adult Services, Nancy Wagner, is also going to be retiring, too. IMRF, our retirement fund, has made some changes, and that's kind of driving these last two points that I've been, individuals I've been talking about. For folks who retire after January, they're no longer, after they draw from their retirement fund, they're no longer able to work for an IMRF employer. Now, that's something they were able to do historically. So, these two retirements that are hitting us right now, both individuals intend to continue working with us past their retirement at the end of November. So, that's great. Nancy will continue to be a part-time librarian in Adult Services. She'll give up her role as Assistant Manager, and we will be posting for that here shortly. Gail is going to give up her responsibilities as TS and IT manager. However, she will continue to work with us going forward and help to fulfill a number of other tasks for us going forward because she is a font of knowledge. because she is a font of knowledge and experience for us. So we're grateful for that, but we're certainly grieving the loss of our team. That said, we did recently welcome a new face to the library. Our new circulation manager, Kim Hagelin, started last Monday. And she's wonderful. I hope the next time you come in the building that you'll look for Kim and meet her. She comes to us from the Evanston Library. She has a lot of retail background. We talked about her last month. She's phenomenal. I'm really looking forward to working with her. In the middle of November, right before our next board meeting, our new facilities manager will be starting. Our new facilities manager will be Marcos Levy. And he comes from the Libertyville Library, Cook Memorial, where he oversees two facilities there. Prior to his role there, he was facilities manager of the Lake Forest Library for 19 years. So he has a wealth of knowledge in public libraries. He understands what we do. He also has experience managing older buildings. The Lake Forest Library is a historic building that went through a number of renovations. And his experience in working through projects there is going to be a wealth of value to us going forward. So I'm thrilled to be able to bring Marcos into our team and to enhance our facility services going forward. But all of that said, the composition of our leadership team is growing. And there are going to be, there are certainly a lot of challenges that come with that, but a lot of wonderful opportunities, too. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of all of those changes that are taking place because things are unique in the library right now. I could ramble for days, but I'm going to, I'll pause there again. So that concludes my report. Any other questions or comments from me?
Just a comment to that the library has certainly been handling everything in a wonderful manner. And I think probably 99.9% of the people who have visited have found it a good place to be and well-managed. So I think we're, we're working towards an even better reputation than we had before by pulling, pulling with people who have to go through this pandemic with us all. So thank you, and thank you, all your staff.
We've got a great team. Thank you, Jen.
Thanks for your leadership, Anthony. And, oh, I know one here. Just some side notes that we should be getting the audit next month, which is up there. And, well, I'll wait for new business. But that's one thing which will help, I think, with the finance committee. And the finance committee will be at that point in time to talk about the policy once you've got the audit. And the other thing is, we should have a copy of the annual report should be done next month also, right, Anthony? Okay. And one of the things that was part of Chapter 11 was I had asked Anthony who we partnered with, and there were quite a few groups that I had no clue we were partnering with. And I think that might be interesting to highlight that from time to time, and show the engagement and the involvement. And to share, you might want to just share that list with the rest of the trustees because I thought it was a good list that Andrea put together. Thank you.
Not even all-inclusive. There's far more than that. That's just youth services.
Yeah, but I think that would be good to highlight who we're working with, to show, and on an island.
I have one last thing, and that is that the ILA is going from 10/20 to 10/22. And our trustee of the year award to Dr. Rogers will be given at this year's ILA. So congratulations. It's well-deserved.
You're here.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's a great segue. So do you have anything else to add, Jan, regarding ILA?
No, actually, there was hardly anything else.
Okay, Anthony, anything regarding Rails?
Sorry, I was muted. No, I don't really have anything specific to add. I would just recommend to anyone who's got questions about public library response plans to go to the Rails website, the COVID response link that's included in your packet. There's a lot of really great information included there. You can kind of benchmark our library's response against our peers on that page.
Thanks. And so you've covered everything else. It brings us to new businesses. Anyone have any new business? I will be sending you all out an evaluation of Anthony, and I'm talking to several people. And we will be meeting in special session after, at the November meeting. And so I, it should probably be going out in probably two weeks. So if you can just send it back to me, I'll compile the results, and then we will meet in special session to review director Austin, okay? After the November meeting. And the other thing is, I was supposed to be with the league, but the league's program was canceled last month to, to open up as to how people run for local office. So that program was canceled. So, thank you. Anybody else have any new business, old business? Okay, that conclude, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Stuart, to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Marcy's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Nay. Happy Halloween. Go out and vote and enjoy the ball.
And Marty, thanks for setting me up for ILA. I'm doing ILA virtually, so that's very cool. So thank you.
Oh, you are? Okay. I'll be at trustee Rogers' ceremony since I, and I think the three other people that wrote letters, I also invited on his behalf when I put the nomination up. So looking forward to Thursday. Thank you.